Good evening and welcome to the June 25th, 2020 meeting of Yorktown Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Gordon Fine. I chair the board. Joining me on the board tonight so far is Robert Fahey, John Maestrick. Who else we have from the board?
Jay.
Bob, John and me, those are three of us so far. We have our recording secretary Glenda Daly, our special counsel Adam Rodriguez. Hopefully some more board members will join us as we progress. Let me just do some housekeeping items here for everybody who's on Zoom or watching on TV. This meeting is being broadcast live on Town Cable TV channels. If you would like to join and participate in this Zoom meeting, click the registration link on the town's website calendar page for this meeting. All meeting participants will remain without video and on mute until their items called in order to simplify the on, the view on the screen. Those joining by computer can use the chat function in Zoom to contact the meeting host Robin if needed. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak during public comment portion of an application, please raise your hand by clicking the raised hand button at the bottom of the participants list or send a chat message to the host. You may request to speak or have the host read your comments or questions. Please do not speak until invited to do so by the chairman or host and identify yourselves by stating your name for the record. If you are joining to Zoom by phone only, all phone calls will remain on mute in order to minimize background noise. Press star nine to raise your hand to the host indicate you would like to speak. When you are invited to speak, please identify yourself by stating your name for the record. If you're watching this meeting on television and would like to comment on an item, you may call into the Zoom meeting using the phone number and meeting information shown in the host box on the screen. Remember to tell the host if you would like to comment, click the raised hand button on the bottom of the participants list. Send the chat message to the host using the chat button on the bottom of the Zoom window, or if you're on the phone, press star nine. There you are, Bob reappeared. Okay, moving on. First thing we need to do is approve last month's minutes. Everybody received the minutes from the May meeting? Any comments or questions? Okay, that I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of May. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, we still don't have any new members of the board joining us. Yeah, I don't see Billy or Tony.
Interesting. Should be an interesting evening.
Well, we'll see. Next thing we need to do is set up next month's meeting. If you're on new business or your meeting's adjourned tonight, the next meeting will be July 23rd. At 6:30, most likely be on Zoom again. To send out your mailings, they must be sent out between June 29th and July 8th. If they are sent out before June 29th or after July 8th, we will not be able to open your hearing at the next meeting. In order to find out who to send your mailings to, you down to town hall to the tax office, tell them you need to send the zoning board notice out to your neighbors. They will tell you the names and addresses or show you the names and addresses of those people you have to send the notices to. You'll write them down on the list that's been provided to you, blank sheet that's been provided to you and you pack it. Write those names and addresses down. You'll also need to post your zoning board signs conspicuously outside your home on your property on the street so people see it. You'll need also at the next meeting to bring your assigned sign affidavit or submit earlier actually your signed sign affidavit along with a photograph of the sign on the property. The mailings do not have to be sent out by certified return receipt mail. They only have to be sent out by notice of mailing from the post office, which will only cost you about a dollar as opposed to about $6 for mailing. It's just a simple receipt stamp by the post office showing that you sent the mailing out on specific date to a specific person. But so before the next meeting, you have to submit a copy of your application that you sent out with a notice that you sent out, the list of who you sent it to, a copy of your sign, sign, sign affidavit along with a photo of the sign on the property, as well as all of the white receipts from the post office showing who you mailed those notices to. Okay, if we have to do site visits on your property, that'll be done. We used to do it on the Saturday before the meeting, but given the new way we're doing things these days, the board members will more than likely just do their own visits on their own. They'll just drive by the property. They won't be entering your home. So all that being said, I see we now have our two other members present, Tony Capote and Bill Gregory with us now as well. So we have a full complement of board members. So let's move on to the new business agenda. First, we have Manning at 304 Alden Road, application legalized existing shed with a rear yard setback of six feet, one inches or a minimum of 10 is required at 304 Alden Road. Is Mr. or Mrs. Manning on the line? Okay, we're going to refer that to the building department, set it down for a site visit and public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have Acme Realty. That's an application for special use permit for an outside storage area with an eight-foot fence around it at 2013 Cromtown Road. That's the old Cablevision building. My understanding is this is an application for a new storage area. It's on a grass area outside the building. So they're applying for the storage permit as well as being able to put the fence around.
Where is this again, Gordon?
Behind the Cablevision building.
Cablevision, okay.
No longer Cablevision, but that's what we all know it is.
Got it.
So set it down for site visit, refer it to the building department. Send it to planning as well. And public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the adjourned agenda. We have Sarlow, which is at 675 Solomon River Road. That's being adjourned at the request of the applicant. I asked, I think I asked legal to send out a notice last month to find out what the status of this one is. I asked, I'll ask legal department to send.
Yeah, they asked them to send a letter last month.
Yeah, they asked to send, I'm asked to send a letter again to find out the status.
They did a second notice.
Yeah, we'll send another notice.
Okay, they did a second notice.
Okay, so that'll be adjourned. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Busello, which is 608 Granite Springs Road. It's renewed the special use permit for accessory apartment. That was adjourned request by the applicant. I don't know why it's adjourned, but we'll adjourn it for next month.
Yeah.
Next, we have Adorno. Was Adorno on the line? Adorno. Robin, is Adorno there?
Hi, yep. John Scavelli is here representing the Adornos.
Okay, application to allow accessory structure with a side yard setback of 5.5 feet. Minimum 15 is required, a height of 17 feet, 10 inches or a maximum of 15 feet required. And a combined footprint of all accessory structures of 86% of the main dwelling or a maximum of 80% is allowed. There's a second application we're combining with this. That was for a shed, but I don't see it on here. On the next page. Sorry. Allow existing shed with the rear yard setback of 6.5 feet, minimum 10 is required. Again, that's at 146 Cordsland Road. Last time that this was on the agenda, we went through, we had asked the applicants, they had to submit some specs on the wood burning boiler that they were intending to put back in the new garage. That has been submitted to the file. Has everybody had a chance to receive that?
Haven't, I have not looked at it. Did John Landy do an inspection on that property?
Um, they had done one previously and the last time, last time we were at the meeting, I asked them if it was permitted to be inside and he said yes.
Okay, and we had asked for some feedback as to clearances and whatnot with between the outside walls and the brush.
That's, that's going to be up to him when he goes to install it.
Okay.
That is in, that is in the book here.
John.
This is.
Question?
Yes, so the specs that were submitted, are those the ones that you're going with?
Yes, those would be the specs that they'd be going with.
That's the one they're using.
Yep, and he's aware that, you know, the permit would have to be filed and all, you know, co-requirements and permitting would have to be, you know, filed to to have that installed. And I know he spoke directly with John Landy regarding that as well.
Okay.
Yes. So if I understand correctly, he's been operating this since for about the last five, six years? He's had that, how long has he had that boiler in the shed?
That, that pretty slow. I don't know the exact timing of it.
Oh, it's been there since the law was enacted for outdoor boilers.
And when was that?
I don't know the exact year of that.
Yeah, but it's been there for quite some time. So now he has to file for a permit to get it? He didn't have a permit before?
Yeah.
It's part of the permitting for the structure when he, when he goes to building.
Okay.
File approval.
Got it.
Yeah, and he can't just put it in on his own.
Well, it's been there for a while. So it's like, did he put it in his own or no?
But he's putting in a new one. So he has to, it's part of the permitting process now.
Okay. John. John Scavelli?
Yes.
This is in fact a new boiler, correct?
Yeah, well, it would be the existing boiler that he would, you know, have to file for a new permit for the new, you know, when, you know, be the new structure have to get built and then they'd have to reinstall the boiler with all necessary.
So in essence, then this boiler is the one that's been there for a while and now he's just reinstalling it in the garage?
Correct, yes.
Okay, it's in, it's in the, it's in the existing garage. Correct. All right, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else on the board have any comments? I know we were discussing last time the fact that there's also the shed application and that if the shed was not included in all of this, the combined footprint would be below the 80% that he's seeking a variance on. So we're discussing getting, possibly getting rid of the shed. Is that still a possibility, Mrs. Scavelli, or you want us to rule on that?
Yeah, so I mean, the shed is currently used for, you know, lawn equipment and, you know, outdoor equipment. So I mean, the idea is to have the garage structure so that, you know, we can park cars in the actual garage structure and have additional storage up above the garage. But really that storage above the garage wouldn't necessarily be, you know, you know, him be able to, you know, transfer that storage to, you know, and up a second level attic storage. So, you know, he would like to, you know, pursue the variance for, for the rear shed for all the, all the lawn equipment.
Because as you know, it's our first priority is to determine if this can be done without a variance. So by not approving the shed, that's the simplest way to cut back at least on the footprint variance that you're looking for, leaving just the height variance. How's anybody else on the board feel about that?
I would be inclined to push for the removal of the shed to be conform with, with what we're looking to do with, with, with the garage.
I mean, there's, there's, there's there are a lot of things on this property. I mean, it's 86% of coverage.
It's overdone.
I mean, basically that law was passed probably, you know, to avoid this exact scenario. So, you know, we have to take that very seriously.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm sorry.
It's, it's a storage shed. It's not living space.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's been a continuous of I'll do what I want whenever I want.
No, no, that's, I'm saying it, I'm saying it in the sense that it's a storage shed. It's not like we're throwing anybody out.
Right, exactly. And, and I, and I really don't, sorry, I would make it comply to what the requirements are.
It's like, there's so many accessory structures that this law exactly is trying to prevent, you know, the, you know, the overabundance of accessory structures on one property. And this is a textbook example of, of that situation. And then you couple that with the fact that the prior rulings for variances specifically addressed adding more accessory structures and that they would always need approval. So, you know, the prior board rulings were even before the advent of that, that coverage law, were mindful of this scenario. You know, accessories overtaking the property.
Exactly. Anybody, Robin, anybody in the audience want to comment on this?
No one has indicated that they would like to speak, no.
Mrs. Scavelli, anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, the shed has been there. I believe it's been like 19 years. It's been there with no complaints from, from any sort of neighbors. And I believe he did file for the original permits. It was just, it wasn't, it wasn't closed out properly. You know, but it's been an existing structure, you know, in that place and, you know, used for, for lawn storage for, you know, nearly two decades.
I understand that, but now he's asking for another variance to make a garage bigger than it was before to add storage space. So he's adding even more storage space. The fact that it's not as convenient as the shed, to me, really doesn't make a difference. He's just asking, keeps asking for more.
One possibility is to basically reduce the size of the garage to make it within the 80%.
Or simply remove the shed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, we could let the applicant see what he prefers.
Which, 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 which do you want more?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that, you know, the garage, you know, would be, you know, take precedent. And I know there's, there's two separate variances being asked for. Do, do they get voted on separately or do they?
Well, I'm going to put them into one, I'm going to put them into one decision because they're kind of together because it's the shed.
And it impacts the property.
Well, it's the shed that puts them over.
Consider it individually.
It's the shed that puts them over the 80%.
Well, there it is.
So the other thing that we were discussing.
Nothing else can be done on the property?
Well, no, we still need a variance or something else, but we just flat out denied the shed.
Right.
Then the problem is he just has to move the shed four feet further away from the property line. He doesn't need a variance under that theory.
Well, there was an earlier decision that said any accessory structures need zoning board approval for this property. So it's a different situation than a variance. It's.
One, one of, one of the things, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, it's, I think I.
One of the things that you may want to do is basically if, if the board is inclined, we can deny the setback for the shed and also deny the, the, the coverage of 80, 86%. And as part of the decision, basically indicate that the applicant needs to comply with the ordinance in that the coverage cannot exceed 80.
Bill, if I could just interrupt for one second, I was just given word that we had lost signal for a while. So everything after when we started talking about the shed was kind of lost. So we're back on now. So I'm going to paraphrase what transpired the best I can in that timeframe is we started discussing the other application, which was the shed. And it was the shed on the property, or at least could be the shed on the property that puts him over the 80% coverage, which is why they need the variance for the combined footprint of 86%, which is supposed to be 80% max. So what we're discussing is either denying the shed or asking Gavin if they willfully remove the shed. Mr. Scavelli indicated that it was, anybody can correct me if I'm saying this wrong. Mr. Mr. Scavelli's position for his client was that he believed his client wanted the shed because he needed it for storage in addition to the storage that was going to be in the new structure. We then discussed the height of the new structure and that the he would have storage in the new structure and then he just keeps asking for more storage. So what the board members were discussing is whether we're inclined to grant the height variance, let him have his extra storage space and deny the combined footprint variance, which would in essence mean he has to remove the shed or something else that would bring him down below, down to the 80%. Or which also means he'd have to move the shed to become compliant with the 10-foot setback and also take something away. So that's where we're at.
And I think, I think my inclination, quite frankly, is that we want to do two, want two things. One is that we don't want to grant the six foot, six and a half foot variance for the shed. And the other thing is that we want the applicant to comply with the 80% requirement code.
Right.
Exactly. So, so if we, if we in a sense couch the variance language on granting the, the height for the garage and then basically indicating that the, the variance for the, for the separate shed is denied and also that the applicant is going to necessarily have to meet the 80% requirement of coverage, then, then he.
Well, we just, we would just deny that part of the requested application for the combined footprint.
And then in essence, what the applicant can do is, is make a decision. Either he, either he's going to reduce the size of the garage or he's going to reduce.
So.
You know, and, and what he has to do is at the very least, if he's going to reduce the size of the garage, he's going to have to move the shed.
Right, right.
Well, do we, do we necessarily care about moving? If for some reason the applicant was going to keep the shed and, and reduce the size of the garage, would we care about the?
I don't want to make the decision, I don't want to make the decision.
What I had said before, it's up to the applicant to decide which do you want more? Do you want that shed or do you want the garage, one or the other? If you want to turn around and say, you know, you want to, the paramount thing is to comply with the 80%. And, and, and right, either you reduce the size of the garage or you take the shed out, which, whichever you want to do. But it's not going to be both. So you have to make that decision as to what are you, what's more important? I think the easiest thing to do is take the shed out, but I'm not the applicant. If he insists he wants it, that's just up to score, but then he's going to have to revise the shed, the shed height.
We just make, we make the decision and it's up to the applicant, what they want to do with it.
All right. And, and that basically at the end of the day, you want to have the shed comply with the secrets.
Correct.
If in fact he decides.
If he wants to keep it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would move then that we grant the application to allow an accessory structure with a side yard setback of 5.5 feet or a minimum of 15 is required and a height of 17 feet, 10 inches or a maximum of 15 feet required, that being the garage. Right, with the understanding this pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line. And that the garage be built substantial conformity to the plan submitted and that the requested variance for a combined footprint of all accessory structures of 86% of the main dwelling or a maximum of 80% is allowed be denied. And also the requested variance to allow an existing shed with a rear yard setback of 6.5 feet or a minimum of 10 feet is required be denied. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, not opposed.
Tony, is your audio on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I couldn't hear you. I didn't know if you were, so you're looking down. I thought maybe you were thinking about something else.
No, I was reading something.
Ah, okay. She's in there.
Okay, that takes care of that one.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Moving on, we have Hoffman, which is 3808 Cromtown Road. The accessory apartment renewal, the notes from saying no mailings. Is Mr. or Mrs. Hoffman on the line? Though we'll just have to adjourn this for next month. It's not open, so we don't have to vote on it. I just asked legal to send a letter to the applicant. They're asking for status. Moving on, we have Philagomo. Philagomo present? Yes. Application for an accessory apartment, 2394 Loring Place. The previous one expired in 1997. Adjourned last time because one of the mailings was sent to the prior owner and not to the new owner. It was technically noticed, was there was the sign and it was advertised. My understanding is the new owner was notified. I have nothing by way of.
Just lost you, can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yep.
Can you hear me now?
My understanding is that we have nothing new from last month. This month we rely upon, we had from last month. Anybody in the audience want to comment on this application? Anybody on the board want to comment? All right, so now that the application is complete, I would move that we grant the application for accessory apartment at 2394 Loring Place for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's done.
So that starts from today?
You got it.
All right, thank you guys. I appreciate it. And John, thank you for getting Joe. Joe was great. He came out here and inspected it. So thank you to everybody.
You're welcome.
Stay safe. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, we have Hannan?
Hannan, yes.
Okay, this is an application for a special use permit for accessory apartment at 1271 Baldwin Road. Who's on the line with us?
Gladys Hannan.
And Peter Negromi.
Okay, we have, this is a new accessory apartment or renewed?
No, this is a renewal.
Renewal.
Of an existing apartment.
Okay.
How long has that been? How, how long has the apartment been there?
The apartment.
Five years.
No.
Okay.
We've been here 45 years. The apartment's been there about 20 years.
All right. And you've had, and you've had a permit all this time?
Yep.
Well, no, there, there was a period of time where we didn't have the permit. And you called us and we took care of it.
When was that?
Oh God, I don't remember exactly how many years ago.
Okay, so it was years ago?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, we have a memo from the building department dated June 22nd. They did an inspection. No changes to the apartment since the previous approval. They're in substantial compliance with the building code regulations. They have to get a new CVO. That's all we have from the building department. Anybody in the audience have a comment on this? Anyone, Robin?
No.
Okay, then I move that we grant the application for special use permit for accessory apartment at 1271 Baldwin Road for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We have Abrams.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
You can hear you.
Okay, great.
Renewal the special use permit for accessory apartment at 3461-A Sagamore Avenue. Could you please give us your name for the record, please?
Yes, David Abrams, A B R A M S.
Okay, we have a memo from the building department dated June 22nd. They did their inspection. Everything's in compliance. Why do they have to get a new CVO? Hey, anybody in the audience have a comment on this application? Robin?
Not that I can see.
Anybody on the board? Okay, I would move then that we grant the application for renewal of special use permit for accessory apartment at 3461-A Sagamore Avenue for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Abrams.
Thank you very much. Stay safe.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lefer. Next, we have Lefer. You were hearing that?
This Elliot Senor here for the applicant.
There you go.
How you doing?
Well, you look like you're superimposed in that picture.
Oh, that's my conference room in the background in my basement here.
This is an application to allow a new dwelling on a lot with a side yard setback equal to the front of twenty-seven feet. Or minimum forty feet is required. The front yard setback of thirty-five feet or minimum forty is required. And a lot width of ninety-seven point one feet or minimum one hundred is required at three eighty-seven Granite Springs Road. Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing, members of the board? My name's Elliot Senor, S E N O R. I'm an engineer surveyor in uh, Hartsdale. Uh, I live here in Yorktown.
So you wanna run us through the application?
Yes, so the application, I have a screenshot here if you want, if I can share my screen.
One second.
Alright, share screen. Wanna share this one? Alright, can you see that? Um.
Is on?
Okay, uh, so this is a uh, property on the corner of uh, Granite Springs and Gregory Street. Um, this is uh, uh, Gregory and Granite Springs. Uh, it's an existing lot uh, that was created by deed many years ago. Um, it's been submitted to the building department um, for several years. Um, the property owner only owns this property. Uh, it was attached to adjacent property, but it was subdivided, uh, you know, uh, many years ago. Um, she had since sold off the, the rest of the property and kept this and is now trying to sell it, but uh. Have come up with these uh, these problems uh, that arose from trying to get a building permit now. On this. It basically came up when the applicant tried to get the uh, as far as I know, tried to get the address changed from. Granite Springs to Gregory Street. And then it was uncovered in the building department that it was never subdivided. So in any event, um, the property, we need a, a property with uh, variance of uh, from. Uh, hundred to ninety-seven, I think it was. Um, because our width here is a little short, we're not quite a hundred feet wide. Uh, we also are asking for a variance of a front yard setback off of Gregory to thirty-five feet. The front yard setback seems to be measured from the steps, not from the main building here. Although we have uh, forty feet to the main building, the steps that come down from the porch. Uh, we're asking for a thirty-five, for a variance. Um, on the side here to Granite Springs, uh, we're about twenty-five and a half feet, where forty is required. On a corner lot, you're required to two front yards. Um, the reason why we don't have forty feet here is because we have the driveway coming in on Gregory away from the intersection. If the driveway was coming in more closer to the intersection, we could have had the forty feet, but. You don't really necessarily want as an engineering perspective, the driveway coming in right at the corner of uh. An intersection because it creates uh, you know, uh, accident uh, problems. Um, so we have a, a garage, a driveway here and the driveway back up is about twenty-five feet. And we have a five foot buffer so that we could plant some trees along there, which puts the house thirty feet over, which reduces that side yard setback.
What is the square footage of the house?
Um, John Farrell is on there. John? Uh. I will have to check that. It's not a very big house in terms of our footprint.
Talking fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred, fifteen?
Yeah, well, what, let's look at this. We have uh, ninety-eight minus uh, fifty-five, so that would be about forty foot. By forty, about twelve hundred in the floor or so is a quick uh, number, I guess, uh, John. Um, is not listening.
Are we talking two, are we talking two story?
Yes, it's a standard center hall colonial. Um, I see he was, I thought he was talking for a minute, but anyway, it's about a twenty-five hundred square foot house, twenty-five, twenty-eight hundred square foot house. The garage is under. Uh, one of the reasons why we had to push it to the front uh, and not move it back is because we have a wetlands. There he is. How big is the lot, how the house?
If you, if you reduce the footprint, would it bring you into compliance without need for variance?
Um, well, the one of the, the, the variances for the stairs, basically because we have, well, let me uh, go through. If we, we have wetlands and a stream in the back, and that prevents us from moving the house back any further. The house already is only.
Your neighbor is quite close on the Gregory Street side.
Right, well, that, the, the Gregory Street is because we wanted to put the driveway um, as far away from the intersection as possible. And because of that, we have this uh, this dimensional problem here.
Rob, I believe that planning had asked them to set it as far back from the, from the intersection as possible.
Yes.
I have a, I have a memo. Since that was just brought up, I have a memo from the planning board dated June twenty-third. Planning board has been reviewing the subject as a subdivision project for the past few months. And held a public hearing on this subject at its June twenty-second meeting. The planning board is satisfied with the overall layout of the subject lot as currently proposed. Following variances are required to affect the current layout. Front yard setback of twenty-seven feet off Granite Springs Road where forty feet is the minimum requirement. Front yard setback of thirty-five feet off Gregory Street with forty feet is the minimum requirement. A lot width of ninety-seven feet or a hundred feet is minimum requirement. Planning board has no planning objections to granting these variances that the applicant is requesting. Should you have any questions, contact us all. So the memo from the building department dated June twenty-second, that memo was just really a uh. Overview of the application, doesn't give it a, an opinion one way or the other. Basically, what they were saying is the planning board's review that they, they don't have any issue with what they're asking.
Would the driveway be on Gregory Street or coming out of the Granite Springs?
On Gregory Street.
Gregory Street, yes, but, but safer to do it at that.
Yeah, that's, that's uh, right here at the end of the.
Yeah, Bob, they moved the driveway further down Gregory Street to avoid having it too close to the Granite Springs intersection. Which gave them the variance problem on that side of the property.
Okay, okay, I got it. Yeah, I'm coming up to speed. Thanks.
We're also creating, we're also creating this uh, uh, conservation easement, about half the property, about eighty-six hundred and fifty square feet. A conver, conservation easement. As uh, and, and a, and a retaining wall, a dry stack retaining wall here. So that in the future, there wouldn't be any further encroaches into uh, the wetlands buffer area. The wetland buffer goes to this hundred foot wetlands buffer line.
Okay.
Creating a, a conservation easement to sort of mitigate the uh, intrusion into um, into the buffer.
And see, you have the, a sewer line delineated on Granite Springs Road. This house would be on sewer?
Yes, sewer and uh, public, um, and I believe it's public water. Yes, public water. There's water lines over here on Gregory and the foreside of Granite Springs.
Anybody on the board have any other comments?
So is this on the, like, closer to where Hedwig is? I'm looking at the map here.
Hedwig is across, I think across the street and down for the, no, it's not that close to Hedwig. Um, I don't believe it.
But it's on like. If you're going north on Gregory.
I'd have to look at a map, um.
Yeah, Hedwig is right, right across the street at the intersection.
That is Hedwig. Alright, I was thinking the one um, by the deli there. Right, alright, so this is Hedwig coming in here.
Okay.
Anybody else with a comment? Robert, anybody in the audience with a comment?
No.
Right. Well, we listened to the applicant. It doesn't appear to me at least that the granting of the easement, excuse me, granting of variance. Is gonna cause any undue hardship or any adverse effect on the neighborhood. Therefore, I would move that we grant the application. Allow a new dwelling on a lot with a side yard setback equal to the front of twenty-seven feet or minimum forty feet is required. A front yard setback of thirty-five feet, minimum forty is required. A lot width of ninety-seven point one feet, minimum one hundred is required. At three eighty-seven Granite Springs Road with the understanding that this is. To apply only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line. And that the uh, house be built in substantial conformity to the plans submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three years.
Yeah, thank you, Rob. Yeah, not three years this time, wait a minute. Well, you, you wanted to make sure.
Put it on wheels.
You gotta finish within three years.
Alright, uh, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, guys, ladies and gentlemen.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Our next application is Clifford. Anyone here on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hello.
Who's here?
Hello, this is John Clifford.
Okay, this is an application to allow an existing front handicap ramp. And deck with a front yard setback of twenty-seven feet or minimum of forty at fifteen ninety Amazon. Evening, Mr. Clifford.
Good evening.
So this is an existing deck and an existing ramp.
Yes.
So you're just looking to legalize it?
Yes.
When was the, when was the ramp and deck built?
Uh, two years ago.
It's a handicap ramp, correct?
It's a handicap.
And does the ramp connect to the deck? It's, it's separate from the deck?
Yeah, there was an addition put on the house back in nineteen ninety-eight. And the deck and the ramp is adjacent to this addition that was put back in nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay, the handicap ramp connects to the deck or not?
Yes.
Okay, we have a memo from the building department dated June twenty-second. Um, they have no objections to granting relief requested. Anybody on the board have a comment on the application?
How'd your tree work go today? How, how was the tree work today? I saw them taking out the trees front of the house.
Oh, I guess, yeah, probably went well.
Oh, cool, very good, very good.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody in the audience have? Comment on the application?
No.
Hey, I mean, this has been here for a couple of years. I don't see how it's gonna have any negative effect on the neighborhood. I would move that we grant the application to allow an existing front handicap ramp and deck. With a front yard setback of twenty-seven feet or minimum forty feet is required at fifteen ninety Amazon Road. With usual stipulation, this pertains only to the requested variance and not the remainder of the property line. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Clifford.
Very good. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Atlantic Appliance. Who's here on that?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Nice to see everyone. Uh, Joseph Freen, the principal site design consultant representing Atlantic Appliance. Also with me are uh, the owners of Atlantic Appliance, Joey Bukai and his uh, daughters. And uh, representing the architect Gene Vitrano. Um, the application is for.
Let me, let me just read, let me just read into the record, Joe.
Go ahead.
The applica, this is Atlantic Appliance application to allow a roof and portico with a front yard setback of sixty-seven feet. Or minimum of seventy-five feet required at twenty-ten Maple Hill Street. And that's as we were saying, Atlantic Appliance, which is in the back section of Triangle Shopping Center. Go ahead.
Okay, so um. Uh, the Bukais have purchased this property that's in between the post office and twenty-six hundred. Uh, Maple Hill Street. Uh, it's a vacant lot. Um, they're proposing to construct a uh, a new facility for their uh. Appliance sales. The. Can I share my screen, Robin?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Am I up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, the building is. The uh, Bukais have purchased two parcels. One is at twenty-ten Maple Hill Street. Which is, as I said, between the post office and twenty-six hundred Maple Hill Street. And then a second parcel, which is at uh, twenty-fifteen Greenwood Street, which. Which the property, which they butt each other at the rear. Um, the proposed development is gonna occur on the twenty-ten Maple Hill Street parcel. The uh, back parcel is compromised by the Hallicks Mill Brook and Wetland. And it's uh, solely gonna be used for some mitigation for the construction of uh, of the proposed building. So this is, this is the site that we're talking about.
Where's the post office in relation?
Yeah, right here. So here's, here's the post office. Our site is right here. Here is uh, twenty-six hundred Maple Hill Street, the back of the triangle right here, the current location. Of Atlantic Appliance is right, right over here.
So it'll be facing the section, which is like where the uh, the school is. The preschool.
This is, this, this is where the corporate, there's a, there's a, like, the doctor's offices are right here, just below twenty-ten?
The doctor's offices are right here.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, I got you now.
So.
And, and this area behind that, that, that open lot, uh, this is for a building or for parking or what are we doing with that?
This, this parcel is gonna be left uh, untouched. Um, and then we're gonna do some mitigation, wetland mitigation.
Okay.
In that area. Um. So let me get back to the, some reason when I twitch to the laser, it, it uh, it zooms out, so I don't know what's going on.
So you're coming to us, nothing really having to do with the building itself, just the roof and portico?
That's correct. That's correct. So let me just figure out how to.
So I assume the roof is overhanging the building structure somehow, which is why you need the setback.
Correct.
And this is on the, this is on the new building. This isn't on the existing location, on the back of the building?
New building.
Appliance is?
Yeah.
You're not putting a portico on that. You're just on the new building.
Yeah.
You know, gentlemen, if I could uh, and ladies, if I could just sum up from what, what I've seen and, and the reason for the setback. They, I, I'm sure most of you know that property is pretty overgrown and, and used as a dumping ground. Um, they're cleaning up that back area, which uh, is gonna help in, increase the uh. Uh, improve the waterway there. Uh, I think that's uh, the uh, Hallicks Mills Waterway, Joe, if I'm not mistaken?
That's correct.
Yeah, so they, they have that wetland back there, but in order to, you know, get the whole property cleaned up. Keep off, keep off the wetland buffer, that was uh, that was one of the things to push it forward a little bit.
And that, and that back area is gonna stay impervious or, or pervious?
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna remain, it's gonna remain in its natural shape, state, except for the areas which we're going to enhance.
Right, right.
Okay, so, um, so right now, right now, the, you know, take you quickly through, here's the main entrance. Uh, you're gonna have parking on, on the front of the building, on the right side of the building. There's two areas of parking, this here and this here, which are gonna be land banks, so they're not gonna be developed now. It's gonna be a landscape there in case they need it. They'll use it. And uh, this is where the, the delivery trucks will enter. Uh, from the north entrance here, back up to the loading dock over here. Now, the area we're talking about is this portico area in the front here, and, and Gene will take you through the drawings. I'll, I'll bring up the architecture.
Joe, Joe, can you zoom in on that, on your site plan? Zoom in just the front of the building? I, I, I just want the board to understand that the footprint of the building itself is within the approved um, building envelope.
Right.
It's a portion of. Right, a portion of.
That's what I was saying, it's, it's the roof and the portico, it's the problem.
Right, that's where we're asking for the variance.
Right.
The building itself meets the setback. Yes.
So clearly.
Let me just go through the memo from the planning board while we got it here. The memo dated May twenty-first. The planning board on April twentieth, twenty twenty discussed the subject project. The applicant is applying for variance. For a front yard setback to allow sixty-seven feet or seventy-five feet is the minimum. With parking in front of the main building. The planning board provides the following comments. The variance is required only due to the proposed portico on the front end of the main building. Parking space requirements are met for the uses proposed to this project. The main building as proposed and situated does not affect the ability for trucks and larger vehicles to enter an ex, subject site. Planning board has no planning objections to granting this variance as the applicant is requesting. Okay, that's the planning board. We have a memo from building department dated June twenty-second. Uh, they have no objection. Those are all the memos we have.
And this is just to house Atlantic Appliance? Are you housing any other tenants?
Uh, there's a, there's a potential for um, a second floor for commercial tenant up there. Office space, something of that nature, but at this point, um, it, it, it's gonna be just left. Un, unfinished, not unfinished to the point where it just, there won't be any demising walls up there, it's just gonna be an open space. But at some point, we have enough parking, um, that if, if they wanted to rent that out as all the space. We have enough parking for that.
That was my question. That was, yeah, okay, I got it now. Alright. If you've planned for the parking for the. If you've planned for the parking for the additional tenant.
That's correct.
Very good.
So I think, I think these people in your drawing should be wearing masks.
No, it was drawn pre-COVID.
That's right, this was, this was all pre-COVID.
They almost look like. They are, their entire faces are covered. I don't see any eyes.
And I guess they don't need it. You can't breathe, you don't need it.
Yeah, they don't have a nose or a mouth, so they're good.
And just for some additional.
Go ahead, Joe.
For some additional information, the post office is thirty-five feet. Off their property line and twenty-six hundred is twenty-four feet off their property. I know they don't, I, I know the requirement is based on having parking in the front yard, because we, fifteen is the minimum. Uh, if, but because we have parking in the front pushes it back to seventy-five. But even, even with our six, even at sixty-seven, we will not, uh, we will not, uh. Project further out than those other two buildings already.
Yeah, that, that was the question, yeah, that was what I was gonna ask.
I'm sorry, John, did you finish?
No, that was what I was gonna ask about the neighboring buildings that seem from the picture that I'm looking at on the satellite that they're not setback even as far as this.
Anybody else on the board have a comment? Robin, anybody in the audience have a comment?
Nope, not on this.
Okay. We only have one left, so that'll leave us guessing, I guess.
Yeah. Fifty people are waiting to talk on the next one.
Alright, so. From what the applicant was saying, this is only an application regarding the roof and the portico, the rest of the building applies. So it's not that major variance in that sense. I would move that we grant the application to allow a roof and portico, the front yard setback of sixty-seven feet. Or seventy-five is required at twenty-ten Maple Hill Street. Usual stipulation, this pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line. That it be built in substantial compliance to the plans submitted, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Okay, apparently what everybody's been waiting for then. We have three D development?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard on the line for three D?
Yes, he is.
Where on Lexington Avenue is this?
This is the golf baseball.
Right on the corner?
It's the golf center.
Oh, the golf, okay, got it.
Mark, are you there?
Hi, I'm here, good evening, everyone.
Okay, this is three D development. Application for special use permit for the storage of new vehicles at twenty-seven-ten Lexington Avenue. So, Mark, why don't you give us your appearance to the record, then we can get into what we need to do with this application?
Sure, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, everyone, my name is Mark Blanchard, uh, from the firm Blanchard and Wilson. Here at two thirty-five Main Street, White Plains, New York. Uh, suite three-three-zero, I represent the owner, Three D Development LLC, seeking to. Um, change the use, as you can see, of the Yorktown Golf and Baseball Center. From a recreational use to an, an office building in support of a new vehicle inventory storage. For a potential, uh, tenant of my client's, uh, Tarrytown Honda.
I'm sorry, that broke up, what was that, Tarrytown what?
Honda.
No. Honda, okay.
Concept here is we are in lease negotiations with the Tarrytown Honda business. Uh, I don't know if you're familiar with their location right off of the exit of. The thruway, when you get across the Tappan Zee or Mario Cuomo Bridge. They're on a little bit of a postage stamp kind of, uh, lot. And they're looking for, um, new vehicle storage. Not involving any retail sales of that nature, no tours, no showings, just simply overflow inventory storage. And the concept has evolved into using now, uh, the onsite building and structure for some. Uh, administrative and clerical issues, some office-supported, uh, space for the business.
Let me get into the memos that we have on this first. We have a memo from the building department dated, yeah. Someone ask me something?
Yeah, me. Notices. Notices, did we get into the notice thing?
I'm gonna get into all that now. Okay. Mark, it's my understanding, it was a notice as an application under three hundred dash forty-four for special use permit, correct? Correct. Okay. So that being said, let me get into the memos, then we'll get into the notice part. So there's a memo dated June twenty-second from the building department. This is an application for a special use permit to allow exterior, an exterior storage yard. For the storage of cars, this property is located in I-one zone. I inspected the property on June nineteenth, under three hundred dash twenty-one sixteen A-one. And three hundred ninety dash ninety-four D-one. Outdoor storage for any of the permitted uses allowed herein shall be in conjunction with the main permitted use. So long as the outdoor storage of equipment, vehicles and/or supplies are fully screened and fenced, the fenced outdoor storage area. Must conform to the setback requirements for the main use and be in accordance with an approved site plan. Uh, then he questions, is this going to be a main use, main permitted use or an accessory use? Then we have a memo from the planning board. Dated June twenty-fifth. They discussed this at their June twenty-second meeting. Being this is the I-one zone permitted uses for this owner outlined in Town Code Chapter three hundred dash ninety-four. Planned light industry. The applicant's attorney stated that the proposal is to utilize an existing building on, on site to house. A small office as a main use allowed under the Town Code Section three hundred dash ninety-four A. And that the existing turf golf range is outlined in the applicant's application letter dated January sixteen, twenty-twenty. Will be used as automobile storage as a special permit under Section three hundred dash forty-four. Entitled exterior storage yards. The current use known as the Yorktown Golf and Baseball Center will cease operations at the subject location. Board and applicant's attorney discussed the automobile storage as an accessory use to the office pursuant to Section three hundred dash ninety-four D-one. The board discussed the proposed automobile storage area and its potential impacts to the property and its environs. The need for modifications and improvements to accommodate proposed use and the proximity to the Sylvan Glen Park Preserve. The board provides the following comments. The applicant stated that the storage area will park six hundred cars, the board suggested the modifications to the site. Will likely be required as follows. To provide vehi- vehicular access to the storage area. The turf present at the proposed storage area is not adequate as a surface for parking. And therefore will require modification to provide a stable surface. The existing drainage may need to be modified to prevent pollutants from entering nearby environmental resources. Appropriate accommodation for automobile carriers to unload inventory safely and efficiently. Some buffering or screening may be necessary to protect visual impacts to the Sylvan Glen Park Preserve. The traffic associated with moving inventory to the dealership may be of concern and should be considered. Property's location largely shielded from any main road and also within the vicinity of auto dealerships. Auto storage yards and transit operation facilities fosters the opinion among the board that the proposal suited to the area. However, the board offers no opinion on the code section that is appropriate for the proposed action. Or whether a proposal as described is allowed under the town code. The board suggests, the zoning board determines and interprets. Proposal as an allowed use or uses, the application should be expanded to include a site plan. That shows any necessary improvements and any other documentation. That is appropriate to ensure the greatest protection for the site users, the environs and community. If the board determines use to be allowed under three hundred dash ninety-four A, three hundred dash ninety-four D-one. The planning board believes that under Section three hundred dash one oh-two, an amended site plan is required. We also had a letter to the file. Of a resident of the town, Gregory Kopstein, I'm wanna, I'm not gonna read the entire letter, just to paraphrase, he's not. In favor of this application, uh, but the letter will be made part of the record and the file. Now, in reviewing all this. It's an application for special use permit, the three hundred dash forty-four. Uh, the property is in the seat, in actually in I-one zone, in an I-one zone. The storage of vehicles is specifically excluded as a use. Because of that, we would not be able to grant a special use permit to store vehicles under three hundred dash forty-four. Um, the applicant would have to file in that case a special use variance, which as everyone knows, is near impossible, not impossible, but near impossible. To get under these circumstances, because you basically have to show that the property can't be utilized as anything else, which is tough to do when it's currently being utilized as something else. Um, so what the applicant may be able to do. But it would not be up to us, is file an application with the planning board under three hundred dash ninety-four. Um. With the office use as being the main use and the storage of deals as accessory to that, that would be under the strict purview of the planning board. And not the zoning board. Anybody have any comments on that, if I'm, I'm saying it correctly or incorrectly?
A question. Is with these vehicles that are proposed to be stored on this property. Will they be prepped for sale, like to bring them down to the dealership with the prep?
Bob, un- under the code, un- under the I-one zoning, it's not permitted to be there as storage.
Not at all, but, 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 but as a consideration, as far as going back to the planning board. If you were to consider something like that, would you have to, um. Take into account the fact that you have that large wetlands area in the front of the property for drainage? I don't know if that exists or, or what the plan is for the property.
Went back to the planning board for that purpose. It would be totally taken out of the zoning board hands, it would be up to the planning board.
I, I can, I can just shed some light on that, this is a little bit, this application's been kicking around for a few months. We originally came in to go to planning, and then internally with the town having discussions. We kinda got kicked over to planning, then back to Mr. Landy's office, back over to planning. Eventually, we settled on that it was a zoning board special use. Now, I think we've all come around to be in agreement that it's really a planning board under three hundred ninety-four. So we're happy to have that clarification and go back to planning. But it, for to Mr. Fahy's question, I would just say there'd be absolutely no vehicle preparation at all. About once a week, the car carrier would drop off the new inventory, and then as needed, individually, the cars are driven off. So, uh, be, beyond the initial front-loading of getting the inventory to the location. Uh, our position is that there's going to be very little traffic actually generated by this use. However, maybe that's superfluous right now, judging that looks like we're going back to planning, so.
And is this anticipated to be a permanent use, or is it a temporary use to bring it closer to? The dealership in Tarrytown, or is this a, a, a long-term investment that you're looking to make?
Uh, well, I can, it, it's, it's certainly not temporary. Um, it, it would be more of a, a long-term lease, uh, for the, for the Tarrytown business. And, um. You know, always having a potential perhaps to purchase or something along those lines, but.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, Bob, gi- given the amount of work they would probably have to do to prepare this lot properly for that kind of usage. Um, I doubt they'd wanna use it as on a short-term basis.
Would, would it be similar to the bus garage on Crumpon, as it's already exists? The, the cut, the county property on, on, on Crumpon Road? Would it be similar to that?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, we were thinking it was more similar to the, um. The windmill restaurant recently closed, where it's the parking lot's being used.
Right.
I can't answer the question about the county, uh, bus facility, uh, because I'm not familiar with the county facility, but it's more of, um.
It's a paved surface and it's a garage and whatnot, would you be looking to be paving this surface? You were saying how, no, you were doing a gravel setup or something like that?
They just have to have a, they'd have to have a harder surface than they have now, basically, with planning.
That's what I was referring to, whether it had to be paved or not.
Uh, well, subject to the engineering, uh, analysis and the planning board purview. Um, the, actually, the owner, the, um, Tarrytown Honda representatives have found the. That the existing, uh, grass coverage, not grass, that faux grass turf coverage to be ideal. For the storage of the vehicle, now whether or not that coverage stands up to the weight of the vehicle and the movement of the vehicle, that's. Story that our engineering will have to answer. But we're not looking to, most certainly with the wetlands in consideration, our proximity. To those, we're, we don't wanna create a humongous field of impervious surface, not at all.
Yeah, Bob, the difference between this application and the ones like Council was talking about with Windmill Restaurant was, is the zone that it's in.
Right, okay.
The zone where the Windmill Restaurant was permitted the storage of the vehicles with a special use permit. This zone does not. Which is why they can't do it under a special use permit.
Right, whi- which I think is helpful that we're back to the three hundred ninety-four issue, it's actually helped the, the, um. It's helped the concept of the use evolve. And they're not, no one, we don't wanna tear down or, or really make any changes to the existing structures. So now that existing house, if you will, that's the pro shop. Will be converted into some, uh, ancillary supportive office space for the business. Again, though, that's not, there'll be no customers coming to the site, there's no retail, uh, showing. Or any kind of retail activity whatsoever. It's strictly, uh, an internal, uh, Tarrytown Honda, uh, use.
Favorite inventory, that's all.
Yeah, it's inventory, and then inside would be something counting, so on and so forth.
Okay. So, given what we know now. The question is what we do with your application? Um, do you wanna withdraw it without prejudice? Then go to the planning, or what?
Well, what, what I, what I, I guess my request, the answer to that question is this. We've had some. Uh, we've, we've kicked this thing around a lot, we've had, uh, haven't really come to a meeting of the minds until almost really today, actually. Um, and what, what I would like would be, um, of the. Board wanted to put on the record that this is not a, um. A use, a special permit application under three hundred forty-four.
Which is what I did.
Right, it's, so I think that's really all that we wanna do, is have, have, we, I wanna bring tonight's findings to the planning board. Put their minds at ease with some guidance, saying, yes, I'm properly in front of you under ninety-four A and ninety-four D.
So that leads me back to the question, what we actually physically do with the application?
I'm sorry, I thought I just gave you a nice elaborate answer to that question.
That was very nice.
The unfortunate thing is that basically this application is before, as you know well, Mark. Is, is an application for a special permit that's not permitted. So, our board, our board unfortunately is gonna have to either do. Uh, one of two things, either deny it or basically have you withdraw it. I understand that the planning board may have some questions about whether or not. Some of the sections under three hundred ninety-four apply for this particular application. And if they do, then you as an applicant may have to come back to us. And ask for some interpretations. This particular application, however, which is before us now and is subject to public hearing. You know, we've got two options. Either you can withdraw it, or we can deny it.
And we'll do it for you.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so are we recommending that he punts?
Well. We recommend he takes his ball and goes finds another game.
I think this is the dreaded. I think I just got that this is the dreaded, we could do this the easy way or the hard way. Why, why don't we do this the easy way? Why don't we have the application, we, why don't I withdraw the application? Or, uh, under, under this discussion, that it's, it's subject to, Mr. Gregory, you're absolutely correct, subject to the, um. Uh, subject to the planning board's, you know, concurrence with my position, but why don't we withdraw? I don't, I withdraw this and then, uh, make an application, a separate standalone new application to the planning board.
If you need. If in fact.
I think, I think at that point, that's most preferable over denial, uh, any day of the week, so.
So you're asking to withdraw the application?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So based upon that, I don't believe we have to take any public comment, because there's nothing to comment on. So I would move then that based upon the applicant's request, the application be withdrawn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, everyone, thanks a lot.
Stay safe.
Me too.
Take care.
I believe that concludes our agenda for the evening. I would move that we adjourn the meeting to next month, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Nice job, guys.
Good night, everyone.